Awesome, well Joe, this is uh probably the time where I'll do a little bit more talking for for a change, but I know uh I know that this is an important section, so um just to kinda key this up like you've been saying it's it's a mock interview. Um you you know, I've I've curated a list of questions that I think are pointing to that to specific areas, I think obviously they allow you to speak to your qualifications for why you're the right person for county commissioner. Um but I also think that as we've been discussing in the the previous streams, it gives you a chance to share the type of person you are, right, your values and speak to the type of heart you have, which I know is a big heart and a good heart. Um but I wanna give you a chance to let other people see that, so um hopefully I do that justice throughout. Um one thing that I do wanna dive in and it's actually not even on my my list of questions here, but it's something that has been in my head throughout the last section and you know, we were just actually chatting about it before we kicked this off is not only the breadth of experience that you have in your professional life, but I think one thing that stood out in all of those experiences is the amount of work that you put in, right, like I I don't wanna use the the word hustle or grind uh cuz sometimes it adds a bad connotation in terms of like corporate world, but it's true and even to your times at DoorDash, right? What motivates you, right, you know, what what pushes you to to put those hours in and what drives you to to do that? And in almost every job that you've discussed thus far?
Permission to give you a very honest answer?
Yeah, please.
Among other things fear. There is there is a very real fear in me that if I don't work hard that um you know, something will happen. Um I think there is a there is a more noble answer to that question and I I have a a sense of what kind of my mission is personally that I'd like to share there too.
Yeah.
A few years ago, I read this book uh called Good to Great by Jim Collins, it's a it's a review of eleven companies that went from underperforming in the market to like three X the market, right? And he talked about kind of the the common threads that they saw across these eleven companies. One he called the hedgehog concept. Uh the story he said is, you know, Fox is always chasing hedgehog, Fox is trying to catch hedgehog and hedgehog dips and dives through all bushes and briars and all that, but eventually Fox catches hedgehog because Fox is faster. Hedgehog however, always has something they can lean on, which is that they can roll up into a little ball and be spiky. That's the hedgehog concept, something that you can always lean back on. Reading that book, I thought for a long time about what my hedgehog concept is. And um came up with a mission statement that drives me to everything that I do now. Um and it'll it'll probably be that statement for me for as long as I can foresee. My purpose is to help others accomplish their ultimate purpose. And in that statement, ultimate and purpose are capitalized. I think every person has a reason for being, I don't think we all know what it is. But whatever you think it is, I want to help you. If that for now means that I am delivering food, cool. Um but you know, my progression through the company I work for now has been characterized by a lot of that, I weigh a lot of my decisions based on whether or not it helps me get closer to that purpose. Um the the motivation to be a county commissioner is born out of that as well. Recognizing that I might be able to help some people if I can show my ability here and can earn that right. Um that's that's I think what motivates me ultimately.
I think that's great. Um and then you know feeding off of that and then as well as some of the things that we talked about kicking it off going through the position brief of county commissioner, right? Um there are a lot of people that need help out there and I think that as you step into county commissioner, that's gonna be become apparent, I think it already is apparent for you, right? But talk to me about how in both your professional and personal life, you manage conflicting priorities and how you're gonna carry that into county commissioner when when you have to pick and choose where you put your time in that.
I think the maximum should probably be urgency. You know, what what needs to be done first? In the interest of not, you know, allowing some kind of harm to take place. In a business context, you know, I think this this is a little softer because it's more about what has the biggest financial impact. But for me with people, it's about who stands to be hurt if something is not done. Um there's a there's lots of different ways in you know, the the business world that we talk about prioritizing, we talk about you know, urgency and importance as as axioms. But I think if you're in a position where you're serving people, it needs to be focused on reducing harm, preventing harm, and that is how we prioritize. Um once once that risk has been dealt with, we can kinda think about the next level up, right, maybe we're thinking you know ideological, maybe we're thinking about future, but we have to start with the places where people stand to be hurt and try our best to fix those things so that people are not hurt.
Yeah, and as you're going through that type of prioritization, those types of conversations um obviously in any form, you're gonna run into people that just fundamentally disagree with you. Do you have any experience, any examples, stories that you can share about how you've worked with people that just see things differently than you and and still manage to come out um with some sort of mutual agreement?
Every single person I've ever met disagrees with me on something, right?
Yeah.
Um I I think it would be naive to say that we could ever find a scenario where we are in sort of universal agreement. I I found that the the best way to get to you know, what we want is to be in agreement about where we're going, right, so you know, usually if I'm in a conversation with somebody, maybe we have some disagreement on you know, the 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 ideology or the the thinking, right? But I think if we can align to the goal, we can then work through those disagreements besides. In a in a business context, this might look like asking somebody out loud, hey, what is it that you want? From this, right, wh- where are you trying to get to? I I think asking questions like that also opens up the conversation to other ways of getting what they want. Because if we ultimately get what we want, who cares how it happened? Right, like um I I do think that there are you know considerations we have to account for, but focusing on the outcome, focusing on the goal for me is how I I tend to work with people and try to collaborate.
Yeah, definitely. Um okay, awesome Joe, I really appreciate that. Um you know, I also wanna dive into some other questions around um obviously the breadth of this position will come with some stress. How do you manage and and cope with stress in personal and professional world?
I've had to get very good at recognizing when I'm at my limit. Um I'm naturally not very good at knowing when to stop. I have um a tendency to to push past, you know, what I'm capable of for a time and then need to kind of uh regroup with myself, right? Um I think you know, stress is just sort of part of life, it's especially part of leadership, you're always going to be stressed out about something. And figuring out how to compartmentalize to a degree is important, but building up coping mechanisms for that stress, I think are also really necessary. Now I know lots of professionals whose coping mechanisms are things that are kind of unhealthy, right? Um for me, that looks like sleep. It looks like uh playing playing chess on my phone right now is one of my coping mechanisms. Um going for a walk, things like that. Um that answer the question?
Yeah, no, it definitely does and you know, I think it's 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 incredibly important, right? It's one of those answers that like, yeah, sure coping mechanisms, but then it's also you think about it, it's like it's a lot harder than you think about, right, like you gotta dedicate time to it and I think that's important. Um definitely, and I mean, I I guess that that kinda shifts into another question, right? It it it's evident throughout our conversations that you have put a lot of work into the person that you are and continue to put a lot of work into the person that you wanna become. Um you know, so what are what are you currently trying to improve on in your personal life right now, right? Is there anything that that comes to mind?
Always. I think right now, I am thinking a lot about who I am. That might sound pretty, you know, vapid, so I wanna give a little bit more detail here. In preparing for this position for county commissioner, I've had to take a step back from a lot of the relationships that I'd built over the last couple of years. Starting to recognize that those relationships have have influenced me in some ways that may or may not be in my best interest. And thinking a lot about what I think and believe. Um you know, we're gonna keep going through this whole process and start diving into some of those ideas, you know, the thoughts that I have about how things work. And I'm just recognizing that there is so much out there that you know either I haven't thought through or my my thoughts on it are not as deep as they probably should be. Um I'm trying to get a better sense of myself. I think as a leader, if I don't have a sense of who I am and what I think and some firmness and resolve in those ideas, it's gonna be very hard for people to trust me. And that's ultimately what I need if I'm going to be a leader, is the trust of the people that I'm leading. I don't need to be right all the time, but I do need to be confident, aware. Um and so that's that's I think where a lot of my focus is placed right now.
Yeah, absolutely, and I mean, I think it's because I'm staring at the document on my other screen right now. I didn't write these questions in order, but it's funny because the very next question in in line is how do you build trust with others? So I think it's important to kinda jump into that, right? Um as you continue to work on that aspect of yourself, as you continue to really figure out like, hey, who is Joe and like, how do I wanna show up and I think you you have done a lot of work, right? And I I've actually, I've seen that shift in you finding out and understanding who you are and just the the two and a half short years that we've known each other, so um but talk to me about like how you build that trust, how how would you go in and be a young, brand new county commissioner and and gain that trust of others around you?
My assumption when walking into the room with anybody is that they don't mean me harm. That really helps me, I think, because it allows me to be open to who they are and how they think about things. I think that the aspect I believe in the most of trust is the belief that I care about you. About your thoughts, about your feelings, that I'm interested in understanding who you are and how you got to where you are. We can't always dive into that, but I think if I hold that posture, trust tends to come as a result. Um now in practical terms, it's really important to me to ask a lot of questions. You know, if I get into a room with somebody and I probably disagree with them, most of the time I start by saying, tell me a bit about what you think. Help me understand where you're coming from, help me understand your reasoning. I generally hold that people don't make consciously bad choices. People don't sit and think to themselves like, let me think of the worst possible thing that I could be doing in this moment, right? And so if I disagree with somebody, there's probably a good reason why they hold that opinion. Hamilton talked about this, right, the very first Federalist paper, he said people wind up in such unique circumstances and have such unique experiences that we often see good and wise men on both the right and the wrong side of issues that matter to all of us. I really resonated with that phrasing. And I think if I come into a room on the assumption that this person means well and that my job is to try to figure out how they got to their way of thinking, I'm just better off. I don't think the trust comes naturally, but I think if I take that approach, it it usually comes with it.
Yeah, I love that and I maybe it's not sad, but it's kinda sad because I feel like that way of thinking is not common, right? And I feel like in today's world, a lot of people do approach situations with the assumption that maybe not intrinsic harm, but the other person maybe has no no interest in agreeing or trying to understand your point of view, right? But
Yeah, you know, and and not to interrupt you there Josh, but like I I I generally think that that just doesn't work out. Like, look, if if you spend your entire life imagining that every person you talk to is either out to get you or apathetic to you. You know, you I feel like you kinda walk through life just waiting for things to jump out at you, right? And we don't get anywhere good when we're concerned about, you know, malice on the other end. Now, I'm I'm not making a universal statement there, by the way, because there are people out there who do mean harm. And so I'm not saying, you know, open yourself up, make yourself vulnerable to all kinds of attacks. But until somebody gives me evidence that they mean me harm, I'm gonna suspend that fear just for a moment. And what I've found is that when I do, it almost always works out. I I think the idea that there are like malicious people out there is wise, you should be aware of that. But that's not universally true, I'd argue it's not even mostly true. That there are a few people who mean harm and a lot more people who just wanna get along, wanna wanna be friends, at the very least, don't actively want to see you fail, you know?
Yeah.
I I I hold to that, I think that's a it's really, really important to me that that is a value that I drive in all of my conversations. Um everybody that I talk to, I can't walk into a room thinking I'm about to be hurt. Uh it just won't help and and it'll be a barrier to being able to help people, you know?
Has that always been your mindset, Joe?
No.
Yeah, it's that, well, to like where, we had talked to me about when it wasn't and I guess that like, I mean, I loaded question, but like that lightbulb moment or that experience that made you flip that mindset?
Um, no, I I I grew up, you know, in like the the like stranger danger time, right, like we were kind of, we were kind of conditioned as kids to think about what was around the corner and who might who might mean harm to us, right? So I think it would be very silly to say, yeah, I've always thought this way. Um honestly, I I think it's it's really been the last probably three or four years where that's really come into focus for me, as I've as I've started to like disconnect from some relationships and reconnect with others, and especially as I've struggled with like building new relationships. I I have tried to take this approach and it's through that kind of repetition that I've realized, you know, what's going on. Um the job that I'm in now, there's lots of conflict that we we come up against all the time. Um and I've I've spent a lot of time thinking about why those conflicts happen. In that kind of conscious reflection, you know, that dissection of the situation, I just found over and over and over again that I, given enough time, could find my way to how they behaved, right? As I've learned more about people, I've also started to recognize that we don't always behave the way that we want to. You know, like it's very easy to make decisions and then look back on it later and go, God, what happened? And the more conversations I have with people, the more interactions I have with them, the less I the less afraid I am of them. Because I've just seen over and over and over again cases of people who caused harm, didn't mean it. Or who just who just didn't have the mindset that people were out to get them. Um I don't know that there was a single lightbulb moment, I'm kinda talking about a progression of thought here, right? But it was this sort of practice of treating people the way that I felt like they should be treated. And it working out and it and it generally working out for me, right? Hope that helps.
No, it does, um it does a lot and I wanna take something that you said and kinda take a left turn and change it a little bit, but I'm curious and and feel free to decline to enter this.
That's okay, yeah.
But as we talked about, you know, breaking away from relationships that you felt haven't been the best for you. I think that's important, right, like I think that it's not everybody, not every relationship out there is perfect, that you can think about that on the business level, our organization is a perfect example, it's not the right fit for everybody out there. How do you go without those situations, so like how do you end relationships without burning bridges, how do you approach that? Um or maybe maybe there are some that it's harder to do so, but I'm just curious about that.
Yeah.
I think it's important, especially for the type of job that you're you're interested in looking for.
I don't think I'm very good at this, I don't think I'm very good at at cutting things off. Sometimes I need some encouragement from others to tell me, hey, this person's not not good for you. I I think that the the flip side of believing in the best intentions for people is that I sometimes place trust in people who I shouldn't. Um and believe them when they say things that they they really didn't mean. Um to be honest, I don't know that there are a lot of people that I have just cut off.
Yeah.
Most of the time, I try to have a conversation or at least to say, hey, like I I just kinda wanna express some stuff, but there've also been times where in not pursuing that relationship anymore, it just started to fade. Um and so I I feel like that's much more often how those things happen. You know, life, life moves on, we move on and I just reflect and recognize um you know, who those people were and realize, oh, actually, it was probably okay that we didn't continue the relationship. I'm not gonna say, by the way, that that means that all the relationships that I've had in the past that have faded away were bad for me, I just mean that, you know, life moves on. Um I don't know that you need to have a breakup conversation every time you decide somebody's not right for you, you know? Um as things get more complicated, it's 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 okay to let things fade.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's probably the best summary I can.
No, I I appreciate that and and I think that it's clear that you found in an inner circle of people, like you said, hey, you know, I've won brutal honesty, I love it. Uh you're something that you're not the best at in your opinion, um so sometimes you need people to kinda nudge you that way. How, when you become county commissioner, how do you build that that circle of trust? How do you find those people that you know will check you when you need to be checked, right? Because I think that's something that's important to call out. Um or maybe on the flip side, how are you working on improving your ability to kind of catch yourself in those, right? Not that you need to, I think it's good to have that support system, God knows I need it, everybody needs their support system, right? Um but yeah, talk about that.
I think that um I I think that being open to feedback is where is where I find the most value here. Um not everybody's feedback is valuable. You know, there are lots of people who are willing to to say what they think and and not really give credit to the context. But when I hear feedback, I'll usually then go to people who know me very well and say, hey, do you think this is true? Um I'll I'll talk about my partner here, Sky, because man, they're incredible. Um they know me better than almost anybody and they have an intuitive sense of, you know, our values to the point where if I'm struggling with what the right answer probably is, I can go to them. Um and I can say, hey, this person gave me this thought, I'm not sure how I feel about it, what do you think? They will almost always be able to tell me what they think and in retrospect, they're always right. I have so much respect for them. The uh the other people in my life are kind of like that as well, I I tend to try to find people who are um really good at one particular thing. And then as best I can, just ask them for advice in that one area. I I have found that if I go and ask random people for their thoughts, they'll give them to me. But their thoughts might not be all that useful if they don't have experience in that world. So I have a guy who is an executive and uh very experienced in the the process of managing people and kind of adjudicating personality differences, and so I go to him. Uh I go to my dad for conversations about, you know, conservative perspective because he's pretty good at representing that and he has a lot of experience in the political world. Um and so I just ask him, hey, you know, what am I missing here? Um and and there are lots of other people in my life, in my work, that I leverage for that kind of feedback. Um I think maintaining an openness to other people's thoughts about me is the only way I've found to unearth those things I'm missing. Um I'm I might not see them, they might be blind spots for me and no matter how hard I work, I just might not get there. So I'd rather just listen to other people and then evaluate that feedback and decide what is probably right and what is probably wrong. Hope that, does that, does that give you what you need, Josh, you think?
It does, Joe, it really does and I mean you know, again, I think you might laugh at my next question as you did before, right? Like I would imagine that that's not always been the way for you, right? Like maybe it has, but but probably not and I think as much as constructive feedback is important, it's still not always easy to take and definitely not easy to internalize and then act on, right? So how do you build up that skill set to one, be able to in- internalize that feedback that you get, but then most importantly, push yourself to take action on it, not all of it, but the ones that you think are most critical?
Sure, well it hasn't always been easy, in fact, I I would say getting critical feedback is is always a challenge for me, um I think it'll probably always be that way, right? Um I don't have uh I I take people's feedback as it is and then think about it, you know, as it's as it's coming and and you know, that kinda stirs up emotions for me that I have to be conscious of, I have to be careful about what I reflect outwardly and um you know, what I show in that, right? But because it stings, that usually means there's some nugget of truth in it that I need to go find. Um and so when I when I go to like think about what needs to be dealt with, it's usually the stuff that hurts. You know, it's it's usually the things that are uncomfortable, that make me angry. And that's a that's a pretty good mechanism for deciding if it's true. I I've given this this like adage before, right, like if some random guy walked up to you on the street and said, Josh, you are a duck. You'd you'd like, you'd brush him off, right? And and you know, even if he like stood his ground, he goes, no, 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 you're a duck, you have wings and feathers and webbed feet. You'd you'd ride him off, right?
Yeah.
Now, why is that so easy? Well, it's I think it's because you can immediately recognize that it's not true, right? But if that same person were to come up to you and and make a statement that stings, there might be an element of truth in there that is worth digging out, right? And so that's what I go looking for in that feedback, is those the things that sting. You know, if if they hit, it there's probably something I have to go after. Um and so I go to therapy. You know, I go, I go talk to 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 mentors and leaders and people who know me very well, who can give me that perspective outside of myself, right? Uh and help me figure out what what the truth is inside of it.
Yeah.
It's that, that's how I think about it.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Uh I really appreciate that reflection, Joe, I think that it's it's so true, I mean, and from somebody in therapy myself and the wife who is a therapist, it you are so right with the things that sting and the reason why it stings, right, and I think it's important, so I love that perspective and I think it's it has and will continue to serve you well, especially on on this path that you're you're going down. Um you know, kind of on the flip side of that, can you talk about a time where you've had to lead through tough decisions and maybe those tough decisions have involved and given critical feedback to to somebody? How how do you handle those situations and how do you, for lack of other words, lead with empathy through those situations?
I think the the tough decisions that I've been involved in have always had this air of not being the one in charge. So I'll pull back to some decisions that um I I made a little earlier in my life. Um specifically talking about, you know, um feedback related to people in my life who I realized were not, you know, beneficial. Um in in giving critical feedback to people, I think it's incredibly important that we acknowledge their humanity, right? And we don't try to hurt them. I I feel as though some people think that the best way to get something out there is just to disregard the feelings of the other person and just say what you mean and I've never felt that way. I give I give lots of critical feedback to people and I've I've given critical feedback to people in the past. But usually what I'll start with is asking, hey, is this something that you're open to? But usually what I'll start with is asking, hey, is this something that you're open to? Can we talk about this? I wanna prepare them. Hey, I'm about to say something that might hurt. And so that's, that's how I have these conversations. I'm about to say something you might not like. I I wanna know that you're ready for that, and if you're not ready for that, let's talk about it soon, but we can talk about it not right now. I I think it would be very unwise to just say what I think, say what's on my mind all the time without accounting for. The person on the other end. So I I'm not pulling to a specific experience there, but I'm just, I'm just thinking about like the the situations I've been in where I've had to drive that. I think if I were to, if I were to have to tell a story here, I might have to talk too much about a particular person. Um, and so I'm I'm not gonna go quite into that level of detail there.
No, but uh, no, and I I think that's fair and I appreciate that and I I think uh. What you said is oftentimes something that's very overlooked, just in, not even just in the business world. But but more so there, but oftentimes in the personal world too is like. Does just because somebody's not ready in that moment to hear something difficult doesn't negate the fact that the conversation has to happen. But your empathy to understand where they're at in that moment and be able to give them the time to prepare to have that conversation. And and approach it, right?
It's it's not always possible, you know, you 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 sometimes don't have the time to tee something up and so. If I don't have the opportunity to give somebody time, I I might just give them a heads up. Hey, I'm I'm about to say something that's pretty direct and I hope that's okay, but I think it's important we talk about it. I I think that if I were to just come out and say whatever I think, there's so much opportunity for it to be either misunderstood. Or just missed entirely. This is something that's very frustrating for me, even in a political context, is that, you know, people talk about speaking truth to power. But the way we do it is often y- yelling and and harsh words. Because we feel like harsh words are how we get our point across and how we, you know, we get people. I have never seen somebody respond positively to being yelled at, ever. I have, I've only ever seen them if they're wise. Trying to filter down the words past all of the emotion that's being communicated. And and maybe this is the 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 tactician in me, the strategist in me, but I'm like, isn't the point of you saying this that they listen? Like, aren't we trying, aren't we trying to to influence somebody in a particular way? Why would you not do your best to communicate that using words and tone and emotion that they will respect? And acknowledge and listen to. It's not, I'm not, look, I'm not saying that I'm mad at anybody for for protesting there. There are many times where we very, where we need to communicate that anger, right? But being angry out in public, in my opinion, does a very poor job of changing people's minds. I I think that there is a strategy to guiding, to leading. And I'm I'm getting kind of like animated about this, right? Because I I just, I feel so strongly that like we can take tact. We can be kind, we can be empathetic to people and still tell the truth. We don't need to sacrifice the truth to to get through what we want to, right? And if the point is that we want people to listen at the end. Then we have to think about the way to communicate that truth that allows them to hear it. If you yell at them. If you cuss, I I'm not, look, again, and I'm not saying that there we have any right to filter people through. I'm just saying it is very hard to hear you when your voice is so loud, right? I I hope that's okay to express, cuz I I I feel like there's a a very real chance that. Um, that might come across as though I'm not okay with like thick and emotional feedback. So, by the way, if I'm elected to county commissioner, feel free to come yell at me. I'm fine with that. I'll do my very best to listen to you. I'm just saying that to the audience here. I'm I'm not saying that I won't try to listen, I'm saying that people generally find it very hard to listen when you take that kind of approach. Yeah, just to add that little bit of nuance there.
I think that was important, but I do think that you made a a good job of of clarifying throughout, so. Um, but yes, I mean, I one hundred percent agree, right? And I I think that's why, um, well, one, we're just friends and we we get each other. But also why I have agreed and been so willing to give my time to to this and your pursuit of this job. Oh, because um, I think the way that you're thinking about it, the way that you're approaching it can do way more good. Um, than what what what's happening right now, and I know that's a lot of weight to to put on you and to throw out there, but I believe it.
Yeah, and and I think like, you know, again, again, to pull back to to Hamilton here, Hamilton talked about this, right? Uh, he said, he he characterized it this way, he said, if we look at the other side. We might be able to convince ourselves that they're, that they want to win people over by yelling at them and insulting them. You know, so he was talking about this back in like seventeen eighty-seven, this this perception of the other guys, right? And and I just feel that while there is a time and a place for that kind of thing, and it is necessary that we speak truth. My approach to this is about finding a way to speak truth using a tone and a timber that allows people to listen. And they're generally not going to listen if they don't trust me, and they're generally not gonna trust me if they don't think I have their best interest in mind. Right, and so that that kind of approach just isn't how I work, it's not how I take. Uh, it's not how I take these situations, right? It's fine if that's the way that you wanna do it, I just think you have to be cognizant of the trade-offs that you're making. It's very quick, very efficient to go into a meeting and yell at people. Um, but that comes at the expense of the message actually getting through most of the time, I think.
Absolutely, I couldn't agree more, my friend. Um, alright, flipping in a little bit now, um. How do you, how do you handle setbacks, right? Like, it's not all gonna be roses as we're aware, if if you do step into the county commissioner, so. Um, how do you under, how how do you not only handle setbacks, but? Uh, well, actually, yeah, I'll I'll keep it there, I'll keep it simple for now, we'll follow up there.
Um, if we have a good sense of the goal. Setbacks just mean like the ti- the timeline has extended, right? Um, now, there might be, there might be things we bump into, I think specifically in a government sense, right? One of the, one of the things I'm anticipating is lots and lots of rules. Those would probably be the the firmest point of setback that we might find is that we wanna go and do something and figure out there's some rule suggesting that we can't, right? Um, for me, if I bump into those kinds of setbacks, usually I think, okay, so now we have to acknowledge that. How do, is there a way for us to still get what we want? Keeping the goal in mind, keeping the outcome uh, at the at the forefront of it. Is a, for me, a strategy for dealing with those setbacks. If we're conscious of the goal, which is usually because we have to fill a particular need. Then any interruption that comes to that, we have to think, okay, how do we deal with this now? I I I do get frustrated, I'll be honest, I do get frustrated when I bump into things that, you know, I don't, I don't like. I think everybody to some degree struggles with being told no. I feel as though it's the responsibility of a leader to maintain that focus on the objective. And then pull people along, hey, we can still do this, we can still get where we wanna go, we just have to work around this now. You know, uh, that's that's my approach, I think, or my attitude anyways.
Yeah, absolutely, no, I I I think that's great. And and I definitely see that in the a day to day, because we all know that uh, where we work, we we run into setbacks. But that that's with everybody, so I definitely see you exhibit that. Um, tying it back to maybe something that could be a little bit more personal too, I mean. Uh, you can use a professional experience, personal experience, just talk the amount of time that you've made a mistake, right? What you learned from that mistake and how you grew from it.
The mistakes that come to mind for me are mostly ones in which I missed something. There's all kinds of examples I can pull from, but I remember one particular case where. I didn't do enough work in the kind of setup of a conversation I was having with somebody. Um, I didn't, I didn't ask enough questions to try to figure out what they were thinking and where their, where their head was at. And I kind of went off on a, on a tangent that I thought was gonna be helpful as just information. After I finished my little spiel, they reflected back and and. Made it very clear that they were not listening the entire time I was talking. Um, now that's a, that's a small case, right? But it's one that happens often and. Those those kinds of mistakes tend to sting for me specifically because I am so afraid of missing something. What if, what if I don't think of everything and something goes wrong and someone gets hurt as a result? Um, I have to get better for myself at being okay with those misses, with those mistakes. Because they always hurt a little bit. I'm I'm fortunate to say that the mistakes that I've made have not usually led to some kind of harm for another person. I'm kinda talking around that, uh, I I hope that that gives you what you're looking for with that question.
Yeah, no, it does, um, and I think you alluded to it, but I think it's important to follow it out and I know. I I don't mean it in a rude way and I think you know that, but you think you're too hard on yourself sometimes?
I do, um. This, this is a, this is an ongoing conversation right now, um, in in my personal life with, you know, with therapy and things like that, is that. I hold myself to a very high standard. Um, I. I care a lot about making good decisions and what that leads me to often is obsessing over the consequences. Um, I will go and try and find as much information as I can to try to cover us, try to cover ourselves, right? And those misses, those those things that I didn't see are always hard for me. Um, I recognize, you know, and I I frankly, I'm I'm really okay with this when other people do it. Like, you know, somebody misses something, somebody knows, doesn't know something, I'm always trying to encourage them, hey, it's okay, you don't need to know everything, right? But I I do struggle quite a lot to give myself that kind of grace. Now, I think there's, there's some benefit to that. Holding myself to a high standard means that I make fewer mistakes than others, but I also think that comes at the expense of my own confidence, sense of self, right? I think anybody looking at me from the outside would probably say, hey, you're you're doing a good job, but I do always. I do always want to maintain that openness because I do feel as though. If I miss something and someone gets hurt. You know, I have to live with that for the rest of my life. So that, that that keeps me up at night, you know, that, um, that feeling of of what if.
Then, not, uh, again, right, like, you don't have to dive too deep into it and it's it's a difficult question. So it might be something that we wanna revisit down the road and and other things as well, but. How are you, and then something that you're working on that I hear you, how, how do you let that, right? Like, especially county commissioner, um, I think that you have a lot of pressure and responsibility in your job today and what you do at Zoom Info. But, you know, I think when you talk about making a mistake that hurts somebody. At what you do today, maybe not as serious as something that could happen as county commissioner, so. But at the end of the day, you have to make decisions, so how do you let that that, um? How do you not let that fear paralyze you in in making those decisions?
Thank you for asking that question, I appreciate it. I think that I do care so much about making good decisions. Generally means that the risks are reduced. That's, that's my belief, right? I and I've had this uh, very, very often reinforced to me, but I'll, I'll point to a a business leader. Um, a a quote I heard recently, you know. It was a, uh, it was a a reference to to uh, Bezos. You know, would, for what it's worth, I'm not a huge fan of Jeff Bezos, but you know, it it is what it is. It, he's obviously in charge of a lot of people and has to be in a position of leadership. I I saw a post from an employee of his recently where that employee had made a mistake out in the open. I in front of a bunch of people at Amazon, it was very, you know, very hard on themselves about it. And he said that Bezos called him over to the table they were sitting at, and he said. I'm not worried about it because I know you are. And honestly, I hope that the people of Calitz County recognize that. I want to take on that worry, I want that responsibility. I think I'm prepared for it, I think I'm, I think I've had the experience to make me prepared to do something like this. And I think it's because I am worried about it, that it's, that it's probably going to be okay. Um, you know, this position is broad, but there's also a lot of people, a lot of really amazing people in the staff within county administration. This is not all on my shoulders, not all just on the commissioners, right? And if I can rally and ask them to think about their particular domain. And be a leader in that context, I I think we'll be okay. Um, I hope we'll be okay.
I appreciate that, Joe, I do. Um, and I think, I think you're alluding to it a little bit there, but I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask you to go a little bit deeper. So, as you evaluate the scope of this job, the responsibility that it comes with. Um, what's gonna be the most difficult part of it for you?
Uh, to be honest with you, the 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 finance side of it. Now, I've I've been assured by, I've been assured by people within the county government that. There's actually not a whole lot of math that commissioners need to do. Uh, we have an excellent, you know, finance department and uh, building and planning does a lot of stuff too, so. I've I've been encouraged in that, um, but I I don't have a head for numbers like I do for facts. So, I will, I will need to lean very heavily on uh, the the people who are professionals in that space. And I'm I'm prepared for that, I wanna build those kind of relationships over time. That's probably my biggest like tangible worry. Um, but I've, again, like I said, I've also been reassured that that there are plenty of supports in place to help me with that. Um, on a, on a personal level, you know, I think the, I think the worries I have most are. The the potential, the potential for making the wrong decision, right? I, I think that there's a general perception that the government just doesn't care or isn't interested in people. And man, I see so many people who I think absolutely they care. But, you know, if somebody, if somebody is hurt. Um, like I said before, right, like I have to live with that for the rest of my life, so you know what that means is. Just like I would go and ask for help with the finance stuff. I'm also going to try very hard to ask for feedback from the people who are affected by these decisions. You can't always do it, but I think taking an aggressive approach, asking for engagement is much better than waiting for it to come passively. And if we figure out ways to do that efficiently, effectively. We can ensure that we are making sure people are covered and that we have a plan for anybody who's who's potentially going to be hurt. We can't always do that, but we can, we can cover most of it and mitigate the risks, so. That's, that's how I'm going to deal with that worry uh, in that way.
I really appreciate that insight, um, and I know we're gonna go a little bit over and that's okay, but I, I really honestly, I have. One more question, Joe, and it's it's a loaded one and it might make you chuckle too, but. Why are you the right person for the job, man?
I give a shit. Like, I I care about this, man, I I think that that's not the only factor. But it's a really important one. I know people are bored at government and we don't like it, we especially don't like rules. But it's really important that we have these structures in place, because again, without them, people get hurt, right? We're gonna talk more about like the role of government and the responsibilities. But truthfully, I think I'm the right person for the job, because I care a lot about doing it well. And I'm not saying that the other people who are in positions in opposition to me don't care themselves. But I would sincerely challenge. Where they're at, where I'm at, and I will just say, I I care about it. I care about it incredibly deeply. And I care about all the people who are affected by it, the people in my community, the people of Calitz County. That's why I'm right for the job, is that okay? That's why I'm right for the job, is that okay?
That is perfect and that is a beautiful way to wrap up today, Joe. Um, as always, I appreciate the transparency, the honesty and the unfiltered thoughts. I think that you showed exactly who you are today and uh I think people got a little bit of insight into that. That big good heart I was talking about in the beginning, so again, I appreciate you as always, friend.
Thank you, alright, thanks, Josh.